I'd like to call the City Council Special Meeting of May 27, 2025, to order at 6:30. Please rise for the pledge. I'll start to take role.
Alderman Dash?
Here.
Alderman Morgan Adams?
Here.
Alderman Cameron?
Here.
Alderman Anderson?
Here.
Alderman Dolick?
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. Item three, approval of minutes. Any motion to approve the May 12, 2025 City Council regular meeting minutes?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Alderman Cameron?
Aye.
Alderman Dash?
Aye.
Alderman Dolick?
Aye.
Alderman Anderson?
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams?
Hi.
Motion passes. We have no presentations, no appointments confirmations or proclamations. We do have public comments on agenda matters?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
I'm...
So she'll read your name, and you can come up and state your name and address, and you have five minutes for your comments.
Michael Cormannic?
Hello.
Hi.
Thank you for allowing us to speak. My name is Michael Cormannic. I live on 5 Alton Road, Big Town, Attaway. Can I just talk about chickens? It's been ongoing now for a couple of years. When the zoning commission started meeting about the chickens, I started attending the meetings and had some questions and thought they were reasonable and yes or no type of questions, like what are there, you know, kind of yes or no? Are there any issues that a chicken would raise that isn't already covered under our existing laws and ordinances? And just like, how many chicken complaints have there been, say, in the last five years versus how many other animal complaints have there been in the last five years? I didn't get answers to any of those. There was a lot of talk after I'd asked the question, but no answers. I was told, well, we don't know. Or the ordinance thing, the only thing that I heard that was kind of odd to me was, well, we already have a lot of laws on the book that we can't enforce, so we need to put these on the books so that we can control the chickens. And that just seemed counterintuitive to me in a lot of ways. So I persisted in asking until I was finally told I was out of order, so I stopped coming to those meetings. I'm sure that's not what the city wants, but that's what happened. And instead, I started looking into what the motivation was. And I started doing employer requests to get the information that I asked, found out that in the last five years, there's been 601 animal nuisance complaints to the police. One of those was about chickens. 601 about other animals. So that told me, maybe this isn't about chickens. What else could it be about? I couldn't find anything that chickens would do that wouldn't be covered under a noise or a nuisance law or ordinance. There was nothing. A lot of us moved here for a particular lifestyle because this was a welcoming place that allows you to live with the environment, with animals, with your neighbors. Most of the chicken people, as we recall, are very involved in the community, are volunteers with PHRRC and other commissions, were very, we care very much about the city. That's why we chose to move here. The only thing I could figure out was, and maybe this is pure speculation, but I don't know what else to say, it was a way that the city could make money off taxes or levies or whatever it is by targeting a specific group of people that want to live a particular lifestyle. And you know what that amounts to if that's the case? That's a federal civil rights violation. Targeting a particular group to either get them to leave a city or to change their lifestyle, that's not just against the law, federal law, it's wrong. And I'm not going to let go. If this needs to go into the legal system, it will, and I'll make sure that it does because I just think it's wrong. I would also point out, and I don't want to get too sidetracked, but one of the things we were hearing is here's what the other municipalities do around here, a lot, you know, and they were kind of cherry picked, but whatever. When I was looking at that, I also saw that these other municipalities that were a shining example to us also require their zoning commissioner to be a resident of the zone in which they have control. And that's to avoid special interest conflicts and to protect the best interests of the citizens of that zone. I know we require the members of the zoning commission to be residents, but not the commissioner. So the commissioner has no skin in the game. And he's the one leading the charge of all this? Again, it doesn't add up. Some fun is going on. And with that, I will end my comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next person will be Jim, and I'm sorry if I don't pronounce your name right. Lanzschmidt?
Fine.
Thank you.
I'm not against chickens.
State your address.
Oh, Jim Lanzschmidt, 410 West 13th Street, Prospect Heights. I'm not against chickens. What I'm against is roosters and quieting. We've had, in our neighborhood, there's at least, was at least two roosters, and all day, they're constantly going at it. One starts going, the other one starts going. It's just been a noisy mess. You call the police, when they show up, they're quiet as a church mouse because they have to hear them. We've done it, nothing happens. There needs to be some kind of order for chicken coops and what have you because one of our neighbors, I'm not going to mention where they are or who they are, just took a shed, it's converted into a chicken coop, and it's right on the lot line. That's not right. I mean, there just needs to be some kind of standard for keeping chickens. Like I said, I'm not against them. I'm more against roosters and having some kind of ordinance that lays down a few minimum maintenance ground rules. That's all I want for either. I'm done.
Thank you.
Next person will be Katie King.
Hi, Katie King at 8 West Kent McDonald Road. And I've been a pretty regular member coming to these meetings because I think that it's really important that everyone gets a chance to hear from a chicken supporter who is a non-chicken owner. And quite honestly, I'm very frustrated that we seem to get lumped in with anybody who doesn't own a chicken must want restrictions and must want the roosters to go and must want peace and quiet. And I am here to represent, not just myself, but other people who I know actually appreciate living in a city where people all over are able to keep chickens, keep roosters, to feed their own families, to have the companionship that they want. And I'm not against that. I think, quite honestly, it's really nice. I'm out in my backyard, I'm gardening, it doesn't feel like I'm in a cookie cutter suburb. That's not what I wanted when I moved to Prospect Heights. And I just thought it was important that that perspective is known and that we don't assume that people who don't keep chickens automatically want restrictions. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Joel Steffens. I live at 301 East Clarence, and I've lived here for 37 years, and I love Prospect Heights. This is the first time coming up with something that I think is pretty weird that the village is trying to enforce. What Michael has said, looking into inviting only one complaint against chickens. I've been to several of these meetings here, and most people are pro chickens. So what I'm trying to understand is why we're listening to the voice of the minority and not the majority. There is a complaint, when I first got chickens, I was told that I would have to deal with noise complaints, so they recommended not getting a rooster. So I didn't want any complaints, and I didn't get a rooster. As far as I know, I haven't had any complaints. I think I run a pretty tight ship where I'm at, and I love my chickens, I love my fresh eggs. I've understood that you can't enforce the existing laws or regulations on the books because you go out there and you don't hear the chickens or you don't hear the roosters. That's perplexing to me because I would think you would hear them. So if that's a problem, then regulate that. Either enforce the books, the laws that are on the books, or attack that noise complaint with maybe smaller flocks, maybe no roosters. But all the things that Dan is trying to push with permits and yearly inspections, that just doesn't make any sense to me. I don't understand why that has to go. So again, with what Michael says, I'm kind of wondering, what is the underlying reason that it's going so extreme? It seemed to be so simple, just to have a couple chickens, and if your neighbor is complaining, I would take care of my neighbor and take care of that, or listen to what the village has to say, but what they're selling us now, I think, is way too extreme. And that's what I have to say about my chickens.
Angelo Petratos, please.
Angelo Petratos, 105 Garden Lane. I am not a chicken owner, I'll start there. I've lived in Prospect Heights, I was thinking about driving over here, 31 years now, over half my life. I've been in the current house for 23 years, 24 years or so, and we chose this area, we love it. Yeah, we really liked it, quiet, very rural, used to be farmland. There is no sidewalks. I'm raising a 14-year-old, and I had a 21-year-old raised here without sidewalks, without streetlights. And I find it interesting that we're spending all this time and energy on chickens and chicken ordinances. I started volunteering with the police department on the onset of the volunteer program in, what was it, 2012, I think, 2013, somewhere around there. A citizen of the volunteer of the year, the year before last. And a lot of that is giving back to the city and trying to keep the cost down. And I've been following this chicken ordinance policies that have been, it feels like it's been dragging on for forever and a day now, and I just keep seeing dollar signs. Why are we, as a small town, who, you know, you've got 30, 40-some volunteers at the police department volunteering, giving up their time to save money for the town? We're now going to put annual inspections for chicken coops, we're going to try to, you know, enforce limitations on the quantity of chickens, how many houses can have chickens? That popped up in the agenda or in the thing this morning, or this afternoon, that kind of surprised me. You know, those numbers seem arbitrary. You know, where do we get 50 houses with chickens, 75 houses with chickens? How many houses are there in Prospect Heights? There's 6,500 houses. That relates to about 1% of the houses can have chickens. Why? Is it an issue? I have chickens surrounding me. I've got chickens to the north, chickens to the east, chickens to the south, chickens, you know, chickens and roosters. I've got four roosters surrounding me. I'd rather listen to the roosters than the frickin' dirt bikes and ATVs. I mean, honestly, sitting in my backyard, the neighbor's dog is more annoying than the chickens in here. My concern for the city is when we start passing, you know, more strict legislation on, you know, what's allowed, oh, you can't have roosters, they make noise. Yeah, they do. So does the dog next door, that dog's barking louder, so does the dirt bikes. I was out in my garden walking around with my wife today, the neighbor's driving the ATV around their house. That's not even a natural noise for our environment. So when we start passing the rooster laws, my fear, and, you know, city attorneys probably advise pro or against or whatever, anybody tell me I'm nuts, I don't know, but that to me is just opening the door for more lawsuits against dogs, against motorbikes, against dirt bikes, against, you know, and it just, it seems like for something that hasn't been an issue, we're putting a lot of time and effort into something that seems arbitrary. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. I need Nikki Moylan, 108 West Kennelworth, to kind of give some timeline to how long we've been spending on this issue. I was super pregnant when this issue started, and my baby's 15 months old now, so that's how long we have been spending on this issue, which I do appreciate all the time and energy that everyone is putting into it. And I feel, I'm glad we went through this process. Where I'm feeling tonight very frustrated is that with the one year that we worked with the PZBA to really fine tune, they listened to all the people who came to the meeting, we had dialogue back and forth between, whatever, the pro chicken, the anti-chicken, dialogue between all sorts of parties. And what was presented to the council in January, if you ask, like, the pro-chicken people was not perfect by any means, but it was more of a compromise than what is currently on the agenda today. So it feels like for all the steps that we've taken forward, we've now taken quite a few steps backward. And I really, really hope that and really encourage you all to listen to your constituents. And I'm not trying to be pro-chicken. I do have chickens, but I would like to see something that's fair to both chicken owners and the people who, the very few people who have some complaints, which, again, many of those have actually been remedied in this year plus we've been working on this. What's currently being proposed doesn't really feel like a good faith effort to work together to find this common ground solution. A lot of what I see in this proposal right here, or the kind of the discussion, I guess, with like the voting and everything on here, is a lot of fear-based scenarios and a lot of what-if scenarios, not things that we're actually experiencing in Prospect Heights. And so my suggestion back in January, and the many times I feel like I've lost count of how many times I've spoken up here, my suggestion has been, can we please go lighter on the regulations to start with, since we're going from zero regulation, and I understand we need some, but can we not go from like 0 to 100 right away? Because once this is in the books, like, it's in the books, we can't, it's going to be much harder to try to reverse some of these things once they're put in place. So I'm really strongly urging you to pause on some of these things. Let's get the zoning stuff that Mr. Peterson has been discussing from day one, we need to have permits, we need to have regulations around these structures and make sure that's in compliance. Get some of that stuff down, but not saying like, only the current people who have chickens can have chickens. When you say that there's 50 to 75 homes that you're guesstimating have chickens, but then you're saying you only want to allow 50 to 75 permits, you're telling people who are looking at our city for chicken ownership, for example, that they will not be able to have chickens because of this limit in permits, which I feel like goes very against the feel of our city and the community of our city. A couple other things that I wanted to point out with what is being proposed here, again, to maybe have a preliminary number or like a pilot program, for example, displays, did a pilot program where they put a limit on permits, and then once they saw things were fine, they actually have an unlimited number of chicken permits in displays. So, you know, that's something where they did put a finite number on it, like, from the beginning, they called it a pilot program, like, let's see how things go before we permanently add things to our regulations. Again, people have owned chickens here for decades, so, and there haven't been some of these very fearful situations that have come up, so let's, again, just pause with all the regulation. And in terms of numbers, I just, again, I'm asking, did council member go to any of these houses that have more than 12 chickens? Like, I have 11 chickens, and I can't feed my whole family with them, like, and I actually forget I have chickens half the time. Like, my neighbor forgets I have chickens half the time. They're, like, you're afraid of these numbers, but have you been to a house with 20 chickens? I just am asking that. And then I do want to know what the plan is in place for people who have roosters, quail, anything that's going to be banned in this, if you guys do go that route, what is the plan for people who have those animals? Because that has not been addressed in here. And lastly, with the inspections, I highly encourage you not to do annual inspections because no one else has to do that for anything. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Grace Martinez, please.
Hi there. I'm Grace Martinez, 1213 Highland Drive. I have chickens. I have a rooster, as well as you guys are well aware. Around me, I have three retired people, three homes, so I'm at one side, behind me in Katy Corner. The one next to me is a single stay-at-home mom, actually, she's a widow. And so I have a rooster, and I check in with each of these people, and no one has complaints. I've asked them, if there's an issue, please let me know. You know, I will do something about it if there's an issue. And there isn't. They say they love him, or they don't hear him. So, you know, it may not be for everybody in Prospect Heights, but there are people that do love the roosters and do like that noise and that feeling of, you know, the countryside of just peacefulness. It's so much nicer to hear the bird calls versus the, you know, roaring motors of all the other construction vehicles or the ATVs that people drive down the streets. You know, we've talked in the past about coop size, and we definitely need, you know, regulation on far as the coops, we're not denying that as far as are the pro chickens. But we've also talked about, like, the coop size. If we're talking about having a permit for the coop, to have the number of birds limited is arbitrary, too. It's irrelevant because we have a coop that you guys have approved, and there's only a certain number of birds that can live safely and contently in that size. Otherwise, we're going to start attacking each other, they're going to stop laying their eggs. So if we have a number, what's, that number doesn't mean anything. I can have 10 big birds, or I can have 20 small birds, and it's the same size, it doesn't make a difference because you guys are asking for permits for the coop. So let the coop size be the limiting factor, not the number of birds, which is going to be harder to control because trying to count even like 10 birds, it's really hard to do. And then you're, you know, asking, you know, trying to count even more than that. So please, let that limiting factor be the permit. So start with that. If it doesn't solve the issues, then we can add stuff later on, as we have said. We don't need to just jump in 100% and get in there. With regards to the annual inspections, I'm, you know, 100% against that, too. We spent so much time with the zoning board, and it seems like all the information that they provided was thrown out the window with this proposal that came out this morning, or came out on the agenda that was read today. It was, you know, everything they said was not, you know, let's not start with the annual inspections. We don't require annual inspections on anything else in this city as far as structures, swimming pools that can cause, you know, death, drowning. We don't have annual inspections on dog ownership that can cause dog bites or anything else. So a chicken, rarely a chicken, that doesn't make no harm all day and lays eggs. There's no harm, no foul, pun intended.
Hard, hard.
With that, so, you know, I just ask that, let's start with the permits for the coops, which we're all in agreement with, and move on from there. Let's see if that solves a lot of problems, which I don't even know what the problems are, so I'd really like to know. Thank you.
Hello, Christine Schiel, 103 Shelby. I am the worst public speaker in the world, so I'll try and keep it brief. I support everything that everyone already said, they already said it way better than I could, anyway. This is such a solution, it's a real problem. I'm astounded and honestly so disappointed to be here again, talking about this again, when we've been through it so many times, over and over and over again. You know, we moved here for the rural flavor of this town. I've been here over 25 years. In fact, there used to be something on the website about the rural flavor of this town, and somehow, I was looking for that today, and that's not there anymore, and that's kind of sad. But, you know, you guys are supposed to represent the people who elected you, and I don't see the majority of the people here who elected you in support of changing or adding any chicken restrictions or regulations. It seems like most people want to just leave it alone and let people live their lives in this town because there's so few complaints. It just isn't a problem here that is worth the amount of time and resources that all of you, the zoning board, that Dan, that all of these kind people have put into this. There's no problem, so it doesn't need fixing. But if it does, if you really, really want to do this, then I would encourage you to make a better faith effort to work with the people who own chickens in this town. There's so much back and forth, think about the numbers. I have 20 chickens. I have in the past had roosters. I've in the past raised ducks. I've been here over 25 years, I've never had a complaint about smell, noise, chickens, anything. I have 20 right now at my house, it's just me and my husband because the kids are gone, and I don't get enough eggs to feed us. I still have to buy eggs sometimes. How is that possible? Well, it's because I let some of my chickens live out their natural life. Even after they stop laying, they still get to live in my yard and just kind of live their lives until they just die of old age. But they're not laying anymore. I also have some young chickens that haven't started laying yet because I buy chicks every other year to make sure that I have some chickens that are laying all the time, so I get some eggs all the time. So 20 chickens? Any one of you can come by my house and see the very, very small footprint of 20 chickens. They just don't take up very much space. My coop is small. I believe I'm compliant in whatever regulations there are. You know, we've gone back and tried to reread, like, what is required in building a coop so, to make sure that we're compliant. But, and honestly, you guys all know this to be true, that back years ago, when we built our coop, we called the city and said, we're going to build a chicken coop, what do we have to do? And they said, well, if it's not on a concrete pad, you don't need a permit, you don't need to worry about it, that it's not considered a permanent structure. I think so many people have that experience. So when we're told, like, your coops are built without permits and not compliant, it's not that we didn't try. It's not like we're trying to be rogue, renegade residents doing our own thing in our yard. It's that when we called the city, and everybody knows this to be true, we were told, if it's not on a concrete pad, it's not a permanent structure, you don't need a permit for that. So we've actually gone back and looked at what the regulations are now, and we think that the coop that we have is compliant. If there's changes that need to be made, we're happy to do it. But again, no one's ever complained about our chicken coop, and any one of you are invited to come by and see how small my coop is and what a small space 20 chickens take up. It's not very much space, I promise you, and no one has ever complained about my chickens. And I'm selfish with mine, so I don't give them to my neighbors because I need them all. Okay, things about the noise. I am sorry if somebody doesn't like the noise of their rooster. I understand what it's like to be in my backyard and hear a noise from my neighbor's yard that bothers me, it gets under my skin. In my case, it's the barking dogs. I like the sound of roosters crowing. I work in a farm, I've been working in agriculture for years, the sound of a rooster crowing doesn't bother me, it's actually a happy sound to me. There's a few in my neighborhood, I hear them caddling in the distance, they don't bother me. I don't currently have a rooster, but I would love to keep that door open in the future if I should, I get one in the future. But what I do hear is so many barking dogs. My yard is surrounded on three sides, behind me, to the south, to the north, all have people who leave their dogs in their yard, and the dogs sometimes bark, deep barking, giddy barking. I have a neighbor who has a motorbike, they're in and out of the driveway along with a motorbike. I have a neighbor who loves his weed whip, oh my God, that weed whip, I'm excited to worry, yeah. You know, the end of the sounds of living in a neighborhood. It's okay. It is okay for us to hear sounds that come from our neighbor's properties. It's okay. We live in a community. Do I kind of grit my teeth when my neighbor leaves his dog out for an hour and the dog barks? Yeah, I'm like, gosh, that dog. But do I call the police? No. We did have one person who had a really loud dog that was out a lot and barked a lot, and then we called the city and said, what do we do? They said, call the police. The police came, they wrote a ticket, and that's not the problem, it didn't happen anymore. So systems that we have already work. The last thing I want to say, I know my time is up, but I think since COVID and the bird flu, like, there's a lot of interest in people raising their own chickens, and it hurts our property values when we make it hard for people. So I think you really need to take that into consideration. Thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Good luck. [applause]
Megan Sliva, would you like to come up?
Hi there. I'm Megan Sliva of 100 Prospect Court. I'm a new resident to Prospect Heights, so I am coming into this whole discussion midstream. So I took some time to read what's been online, what the agendas are, what the different items for discussion have been, what the proposed legislation is, or ordinance, if you will. And then also have a look at what's, we're seeing in the surrounding areas comparing to the city of Chicago. I moved here from Mount Prospect and I was in Mount Prospect for five years and I have a young son. And so when we would drive, I would cross Camp McDonald Road and I'd say, "Gosh, there's such a difference when you get north of Camp McDonald Road." And it feels like you're in the country. And that's a completely different vibe and one of which I was looking for, not only to stay within the school district, but also to have a whole different view and perspective from a lot size to a neighborhood and from a community feel. And chickens do just that. And that is one of the components of it. And I also took the time to talk with different neighbors. So I think you're probably wondering, am I a chicken owner? Am I not a chicken owner? I do not own chickens currently. Is that a potential option down the road? Maybe, maybe not. I'm having a bit of difficulty just pulling out the weeds of my own lot at this point. But nonetheless, I took this to the lot next to me. I never hear them. I've been invited over to see them. Went to see them for the first time this weekend just to be able to help prepare for this meeting. I don't see the issue with it. What I do see is a lot of conversation that seems to be a little bit puzzling and motivation. I am a healthcare professional by training and by profession and I'm not seeing the health consideration, which is what I look at a lot of my world in in terms of a lens. I see it very positive in terms of community aspects and also in terms of property value. So I think that's what a lot of us are here when we look at the elect to represent us. And I think I'd like to see that represented. Then I also look at it in terms of, you know, what are the motivations and from an overregulation perspective? And if we are struggling to enforce the regulations that we have today, how are we gonna potentially make it stricter and also have an issue potentially enforcing those regulations? So I encourage everyone to listen to the thoughts, come to a reasonable solution that welcomes the chicken owners. And as far as the numbers go, I think I'll leave you with a sentiment as I was having this conversation with my son, who's now, he's gonna be seven next month, was asking questions, "Well, what happens if they only have 50 to 75 licenses and there's more people than that that have chickens? Do they kill the chickens? What do they do?" And I think it's been said here already, there is no outline for what you do if there is an open window of licenses and that window closes, someone's missing that, what do you do with those chickens? So I just, I think there's a lot of questions still before we make a final registration decision, if you will. And I like the idea that was proposed here as far as having a pilot in terms of getting some of the kinks out. When I look at how we do things operationally in hospitals, a lot of times you have a pilot and you have something that is a, you do it on one ward or you do it on one service line. So that you say, okay, these are the things that we need to do and we need to make sure, and you involve constituents and all the key stakeholders in terms of healthcare, that's the patients, that's the community, that's the healthcare professionals. In terms of the city of Prospect Heights, that's the residents, that's the chicken owners, those that are impacted by the chicken owners, i.e. neighbors, as well as those that you're representing. So I just ask you to give more consideration in coming to a reasonable solution. Thank you.
Yeah, is there anybody else wanna come up and say something? Okay, thank you. Oh, sure.
Be prepared, it'll be quick. My name is Judy Zoller. I'm at 417 West Willow. I am not a chicken owner, but I also appreciate the unique environment that we live in in Prospect Heights. I moved from Arlington Heights intentionally to our smaller community for that reason. And I didn't even realize there were chickens in my neighborhood until I got a dog and started walking and I'm like, oh, I think there are chickens over there. And you cannot, I wouldn't even know unless I was really paying attention. They're not intrusive to my neighborhood at all. And I agree with a lot of the constituents here that we should be careful before putting a lot of regulations on the books for, you know, not very good reasons. So thank you.
Okay. All right. Anybody else? We want this to be as transparent as a sheet of glass. So if anybody else wants to talk?
Yeah, we have one more that, okay, thank you. Gina, okay.
Hi, I'm Gina Siloski, 15 Robert Avenue. I've been to all the meetings and I've spoken at many of them and I struggled on whether I wanted to say anything tonight because sadly, I feel disheartened. I feel sad that we've spent so much time saying the same things over and over and over and over that it almost feels defeating. So, but I just wanna say, yes, I have chickens. I love them. I've had them for 12 years, haven't had a single complaint live. My neighbors, after we got ours, said, "Oh, my God, thank God. We've wanted these for so long and now that we see that you can do it, that it's so easy to do, we're gonna get them, too." They ended up moving and they moved their coop with them. So they still have chickens and they're still in Prospect Heights, just further away. I've never had a single complaint. My neighbors love them. My neighbors love that we take all their waste. Any food refuse that they have comes to us. Our chickens take care of them. We minimize the waste in the community from us and from them. They've been part of my children's lives since my daughter's been born. Both of my kids, it is their responsibility to take care of their chickens. We don't, my husband and I. We do the big dirty stuff a couple of times in the year and make sure that things are really taken care of. They check the eggs every day. They make sure that the girls are in bed. They let us know if there's a problem. My kids are 12 and 14. They've been raised doing this. This is our family values and it's something we've done forever. And after meetings that we've been here with our kids, both my kids have spoken in front of you guys, my kids have left sad. My kids have left feeling with the whys and what are we gonna do? And we don't wanna lose our birds. We don't wanna have to forfeit the life that we've had with our kids for the reason that we moved to this community. We moved here when I was pregnant with my daughter, who's now 12. We got chickens when she was a nugget. We called her the foreman and she stood there and picked out our paint colors when we painted our coop because that's literally how we raised our kids. Chickens are wonderful. The community loves them. I don't know why there has to be such a debate about it. The amount of complaints versus the amount of love and support that people have to their extended feathered family members is beyond me. Just help us love our chickens like we do.
Okay, we don't have a consent agenda tonight. So we'll go right into our first order business, old business. The continuation and discussion of draft ordinance 02413 and ordinance for consideration of text amendments to Title V zoning, Chapter 2 definitions, Chapter 3 general provisions, and Chapter 6 adding keeping of fowl chickens as a permitted special use. And Title IX police regulations, Chapter 1 animal control and the city code pertaining to keeping fowl chickens in the R1 single-family district. This is a continuation of the discussion that started last fall at the council level for the consideration of amendments to Title V zoning, Chapter 2 definitions, Chapter 3 general provisions, Chapter 6 adding keeping fowl as a permitted special use, and Title IX police regulations, Chapter 1 animal control and the city code pertaining to keeping fowl in the R1 family district. We previously tabled this matter so that elected officials and staff could review the proposed ordinance and provide our comments and thoughts to Dan Peterson. And just for everybody to keep in mind, we're not voting on anything tonight. This is a very unique meeting. I've been involved with the city council for 25 years. I've never seen a case where an ordinance has come before us and we presented the ordinance, not as the first reading, but just as a open hearing so that people could voice their concern before we go into the process of starting an ordinance. So this is already unique. So I know there's some that say there's been no transparency to this, but this has been very transparent, more transparent than any other ordinance. A couple of other things, I've heard some comments about that this is gonna be in stone, like it's gonna be chiseled on a tablet once it's done right now. Ordnances change all the time. I mean, whether it be liquor license ordinances, how many liquor licenses we have, ordinances, every ordinance we have is open to be changed at any time. This is not a permanency to this. This is not an end to this. So it's important to know how that works because when this happens, this doesn't mean it's forever, right? You get a whole new council, they can change their mind and we could have goats come back to Prospect Heights. That wouldn't be our decision, but it's something that could happen. Ordnances change. It's just the way it is. So this is not a permanency. I heard people talk about the pilot program and in my opinion, every ordinance with a pilot program is irreplaceable. So with that, I'd like to turn this over to Dan to start this process of the review.
Thank you very much, Mayor, City Council. I first wanna say this has been the most public process that I've ever been involved with in 32 years in terms of public involvement. This started in 20, late in 2023 and I was directed by council to have public information meetings. We held two public information meetings, approximately 12 hours worth of time. We had two public hearing meetings. We also had multiple subcommitting meetings. There was plenty of debate and most involved process that I've experienced in four municipalities I've worked for. So I want to thank everybody that participated. At times, it was heated, at times, it was not. At the end of the day, the zoning commission, ZBA, made a recommendation to this ordinance. However, when it was tabled, there were a number of items that the council expressed to me were of concern. Number one is that, the question is, is that the recommendation was that keeping chickens as proposed would allow, be by right, so any and all single-family properties in the city could have chickens. That's what was recommended. That means that if you are a person, could potentially mean if you're a person that had a single lot and you were not in favor of it and you were bothered by the chickens, you could potentially have all your neighbors around you have chickens there. And when we look at a map, we've got examples and we have, and I spoke to many folks, and I mentioned this in the meeting, who called and said they didn't wanna call the police. They didn't wanna bother there. It's a chicken. But they lived with the rooster and they lived with the noise. We also had other complaints came in. So the question came up is, does the council wanna change the character of the single-family district to more of a rural agricultural, suburban agriculture? And that's what they raised to me. So to move forward with this, I interviewed all the council members and that was reported out today. And basically, all the council wanted to put a limitation of some sort and to protect not just those people who wanna have chickens because they're not saying not to have chickens, but how many, you know, how do we protect those people, the silent majority of the residents in town? That's the question. And to move forward, that is the number one question that came out. So staff is looking for direction on is that, you know, based on what I've, our conversations, it should be permitted, but not just by right. There should be some permitting process or licensure process in place. Secondly, is based on that, if the council decides to give direction to go in that manner, then the number is how many chickens, how many properties to keep chickens, okay? Right now, staff, and this was brought up during the different testimony and different meetings, that are the estimation from both the people that were at the meetings and staff based on observations of driving through town, roughly 75 coops that we see, some, but you can't see driving in the wintertime. But we've had people who've said it as well, is that was a rough number based on visual inspections. Because there was a concern that how do you raise, if a person doesn't wanna have them, how do you limit next to them so it could be surrounded? So we, staff needs direction on that. If you're gonna license, what does that number be, need to be? The number then came up on, it was how many fowl were going to be recommended. As you know, we recommended at the zoning board 20 based on a mathematical process that I did to try and quantify because at no time was there scientific data that was brought forth by either staff or because, or the public of how many is the right number, okay? I did a review of over 30 municipal ordinances, looked at lot sizes, number of chickens, and tried to quantify and it came out to about 1 per 1,000 square feet. So then that's gonna need to be some clarifications if there's a limitation. Other comments that I heard from the council was that the limitation of chicken hens, there was much to talk about the banning of roosters and because that was where the discussion came is that those noise complaints from those individuals, the primary issue was, was the noise of the roosters. Livestock properties, we believe, you know, this was brought up. ZBA recommended no, but to the Department of Agriculture registration, however, and speaking with the council members, there was consistency in that because it's a free process and it, and it was a way that if there was ever a problem with the chicken flock, there was a way to report it to the Department of Agriculture. And there's been outbreaks in other parts of the country. So it's just a, just what, this is a point of, that the council said that they would like to see. And then on a renewal, this was brought up. The county of ZBA recommended no annual inspections. Council had mentioned that looking at the various properties annually to see if there's been changes, see if the compliance, if any of the structures been changes to them because coops and chickens and runs are dynamic and they can change. I've seen it personally. I live in unincorporated McHenry County and my neighbor's changed his chicken coop four times in six years. Those are just concerns that were raised. Other comments that were brought out is there is a, in the proposed ordinance, there is a process for those properties to, who are not compliant, and this was, it came through the ZBA, that there would be a one-year opportunity for those folks that have structures and that. If there's a problem identified, to correct that problem. We thought about a sunshine period of one year and that's what the recommendation was. Feeling on that one was that there was, it seemed reasonable. Few people did not comment. One thought 12 months was too long. There was discussion of revocation and the three strikes. And one, one council member asked, "Is that really a PCBA issue? That's a policy issue of the council?" And another one said, "Is that, that's creating a set of rules, enforcement rules that are different than the normal processes." The ZBA did recommend and we did, they did recommend changing the structure sizes of the coops and run to accommodate combining the shed and the small garden tool into one so they could get larger coops and run structures as long as they didn't exceed the 1,000 square feet that's already permitted by the ordinance. So from a staff perspective, having talked with all the council members, there were a number of points of difference that were raised concerned with the proposed ordinance. And moving forward, you know, we'd like, we need staff direction from council so we can move forward with the ordinance. Any other questions?
I guess we can go from, from the beginning of the memo and talk about the, is it something that's by right on all R1? Or is it something that the- that's by right on all R1, or is it something that there's going to be a limited number to? So the council did reply to this as far as the number of licenses. I think it's unique that with the comments today, it seems like a lot of people are concerned about future people, more so than addressing the need that's here, people in the room. We're here today to allow everybody to have chickens, right? It's not allowed, and I know there's disagreement on that, but it's not allowed by our code to have chickens. It's an agricultural use, as does the Illinois Department of Agriculture say it is, is an agricultural use which requires five acres. And we realize, it's not realistic, right? So although it may seem like we're working against you, we're working for you. Because if we do nothing, the chickens aren't allowed. You can't have chickens in Prosper Heights, okay? Just because they're here doesn't make it right, and we want to make it right for as many people as we can. I hear a lot of people talking, let's get to the first part first, as far as the number of people. We believe there's like 75 potentially homes or people that have them right now, which we want everybody to continue to have them. There is no desire to remove that right from anybody who's got it now, right? It sounds like it when some of you gave your positions, but that is not the intent. So I guess the question of the council is, how many should we allow as far as a number of licenses to be issued? I know everybody's responded, some people said 50, some said between 50 and 75, some said 75. So if anybody has any comments on this topic, we'll start, I guess, whoever wants to go first, or we can go left to right?
I wonder if we couldn't say a number, let's say we said 75 to start with. You've got to start someplace. Let's say we said 75. Those 75 people that have chickens, that want to be licensed, that want a permit, have 60 days to apply for that permit, let's say. So at least we can...
Well, the application part would be different. That's a whole different...
If I say, let's start with 75, let's start with something.
Correct.
Anybody else?
I would agree. I think 75 is a good number to start. That's approximately how many homes right now have chickens. So I'm not here, I don't want to limit the people who already have chickens. So certainly, I think that would be a fair number to start with.
I would agree, 75 is a good starting number.
I'm good with 75.
Okay.
I agree with 75, too.
Okay. Thank you. Just so you guys understand...
I'd like to make a quick comment, too, because I always have something good to say, right? So I think what's interesting is, we showed our cards, right? The agenda has the topics. It tells how the city council has shared their thoughts with Director Peterson. And still, yet, all the comments today, no one addressed any of the questions. So they clearly said, we're looking to limit the number of properties. Not one person here, like everyone here just said zero, right? So, you know, it's up to us to figure it out. It said, we were contemplating, or the direction was, we're definitely going to limit the quantity. Not one person here said, like, I think this is a good number I could live with. We said, you know, for the following reasons, like the state requires, like, you know, we're worried about making sure they're registered, right? So again, I feel like we showed our cards, but yet, it's always the same, like, we don't want any rules, you know, leave us alone. So I'm saying tonight, like, so we're going to, we're going to talk about what should be in the ordinance. Again, we've heard everything you said, but I would have liked it to have been more comments about, yeah, we heard what you said, that these are things that the council is going to implement in ordinance, but we still haven't gotten any real, like, feedback on, you know, number of properties, number of livestock, what kinds of livestock, you know, roosters, like that kind of thing, other than just like, no, 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 no. So again, you guys are now witnessing, you guys are now witnessing us having to, like, put numbers to it based on what we've heard, right? So, I mean, that's what we're doing tonight. So I'm, again, I'm in favor of 75 homes.
I would like to add to that comment. I mean, I hear constantly, and I agree with Ms. Alderman-Dash, I mean, we don't have an ordinance that allows you people to have chickens. You don't have a right to have chickens unless you have five acres of land. You don't seem to understand it, you don't want to accept it, but you have to accept it because it's the law. So right now, you're all in violation, you're all doing things illegally, we're trying to help you be legal. We have to have an ordinance, we have to have regulation, and we have to have restrictions. We don't have that, and we're going to have it, and we're going to have it no matter what. So stop telling us you don't want it, because it doesn't matter what you say when you say that, because that doesn't make any sense. We're going to have an ordinance, we need an ordinance for your benefit. You shouldn't be able to do anything right now. You have no right to do anything right now. So we're trying to help you to make this legal, so that we can have a proper ordinance that has regulations and rules that every single city and village has. We don't have it. We need it, and we need it for your benefit.
Just some ground rules. This is not a debate. We're not here to debate back and forth on this.
No.
You had your, your comments were taken, they'll be in the record of what you said, what you asked for, what you told us will be in there, along with all the other testimony you've had through the ZBA and the other council meetings. So your statements are in the record, right into the record. This is not meant to be a debate. It's now time for the council. You're watching us do what we do, as far as working together to come up with a resolution. So it's not, I will stay here till midnight, even though tonight's my anniversary night, but that's okay. I'll stay with the midnight and talk to anybody. I talked to a few people after the meeting last time for about an hour, and gained a lot of information about it, so...
There's going to be two more meetings, correct? Like, so right now, right now, we're giving, right, staff direction, and then at the subsequent meetings, then the actual...
Raising your hands, I'm not going to call on you, it's not a time to debate and talk about it.
Help you guys out.
Help me out after the meeting, you can help me then.
I've got something to say.
So with that, 75 seems like a number?
Let's just...
75, okay, we can move on to the next topic. Next item is the number of chickens. Looks like we had a range from 10 to 20, pretty much split in that range. If anybody want to comment on the, or start that talk about the number of chickens?
I'd say a maximum of 20. If somebody only wants to have 10, they can have 10, doesn't matter, but I'd say a maximum of 20.
I'd say maximum of 20, but I agree maybe with 10 to start with. Like, you know, the residents, they want to start, you know, start somewhere, let's start with 10, but max 20.
I would agree with 20 as a maximum. I think it's appropriate. I mean, we're not a rural community, we're not a bedroom community, just so you people know and understand that, we're not. We are a regular commercial town, just like Arlington Heights, just like Mount Prospect. We are not a rural community. So you need to understand that, you know, maybe 50 years ago, it seemed that way, but we're not anymore. So we need to be in the 21st century, and we have to understand the rules of the 21st century. So I'm okay with 20, I think it's a good number, it's a good large number. If, you know, I don't, I don't feel that anybody needs, who lives in Prospect Heights, needs to have chickens lay eggs and can't buy eggs. I don't believe that, because our taxes, which are, quite frankly, a little bit lower than other communities, because we don't have the ability to levy taxes as a city, still are of an amount that if you people live here, you can afford to buy eggs. So I don't want to hear the argument, well, gee, I know, I need chickens to lay eggs because I don't have enough eggs.
You're good with 20?
I'm good with 20.
I'm good with 20.
Yeah, I'm good with 20. I agreed with the formula that Dan presented of roughly 1 per 1,000 feet, based on a half acre that works out to about...
So will that be...
It does, exactly. That's how I thought it was reasonable.
And that would be based, is there any, was there any condition to that based on the site? Somebody has a 720-square-foot detached garage, they have a 200-square-foot accessory building, and they can't build a coop big enough? Was there a coop size that went to 20 chickens, too, or no?
So that's a hard question to answer, because as it was stated tonight, and was stated in testimony, you can get chickens of multiple sizes. You can get petites, you can get giants. And the discussion came down to is, we're not going to regulate the subspecies of chicken that someone's going to have, or that, that's a personal choice. But what would be a reasonable number based on having zero to no data provided, and in reviewing the other ordinances, it was just a numerical way to quantify that level. And it seemed reasonable based on a comparison of other ordinances.
So based on, it's not just a number, so everybody knows, it's not just a number, it's going to be based on what your situation is, whether or not you've already maximized and used all your square footage for accessory structures in your yard. It doesn't let you build a coop of size to have 20. That's something, that's a bridge we'll have to cross when we get to it, but... 20 isn't a hard number, it's more of a number based on what potentially you are able to build as far as a coop.
Didn't you also say, we talked about the fact that most of the lots are either somewhere in the vicinity of a half acre, or give, take?
The minimum lot size to be a buildable lot is 20,000 square feet for the zoning code. We do have some that are a few feet less, a few feet more, we do have some larger ones. And one of the caveats to the amount of chicken coop space you'll have is dependent on what existing accessory structures are already on your property. If you've maxed out your property on the 720-square-foot detached garage, the 200-square-foot shed, or outdoor living covered patio system, or the other 80-foot garden shed, you're maxed out. And then you'll have to make a choice, which accessory structure do you want to get rid of to have a chicken coop? Because maximum square footage combined on a single-family lot is 1,000 square feet. So it all, you know, some lots may be limited just because of how they're already built out, and that's part of the evaluation.
But it's a choice of the, the choice of the applicant.
Correct.
Right.
Okay, 20.
Right, yeah, just so that's clear, it's not a matter of yard, just because you might have a one-acre lot, which are a couple in town, or a lot of three-quarter-acre lots, it's not dictated by the square footage, it's dictated by 20, but then that's limited by what you're already doing in your yard. You can only do so much. If your accessory structures don't let you have a coop, you'd have to make a change in order to get to that point, just to be clear. Okay, so it sounds like 20. The next item is chickens or others. So it looks like everybody was in favor of chicken hens only?
I think I was the lone ranger here, who said that I was okay with chickens, ducks, quails. I think I was, I didn't have a problem with expanding that, not to roosters, but to chickens, ducks, and quails. So I think, again, I mean, I didn't see any reason why there would be a reason to, I didn't see a reason to limit it.
I mean, originally, this came to us as a chicken issue. Was it an ostrich, or a muir, or a quail, or a duck, or a turkey? They all used to be in Prosper Heights. I've been here, and people were, not to throw out a measurement here, but people are saying how long they've been, I'm 57, I was here when, I mean, people had ponies, and my friend had goats. So it's a different town, and I don't want to lose that. So it's important to know that I'm not in favor of banning this, right? This is a matter of trying to be reasonable, protect people who don't necessarily want to be surrounded with every lot around them having 20 chickens. Just to paint a quick picture of that, if your house is here, you're going to have two houses next to you, two behind them, and one behind you. So what is that? That's five houses. You're going to have, you have the potential to have 100 chickens surrounding you, even if you didn't want any. That's a pretty tough pill to swallow, for people that don't want them. I know, Christine, I know, you love chickens, and I don't mind them either, but at some point, imagine if every house around you had five sons, and they all had armadas, and they're screaming through the yard. You wouldn't like that. Some people, armadas are a beautiful sound, some people, chickens are a beautiful sound. But we just have to have normal, limited, you know, realistic sizes, that's all it is.
Right, so based on the survey responses, yeah, it looks like Wendy was, with one vote then, for allowing for a range of feathered friends. I would also be willing to say that, yes, up to 20 feathered friends, whether they be chicken, quail, ducks, would be fine with me, as long as there were no roosters.
Turkeys?
No turkeys.
Geese?
Just to bring people back, the recommendation from the PZBA did not permit, other than chicken, hens, the ducks, domesticated ducks, and quail. The larger birds, the turkeys, the ducks, guinea hens, others were prohibited. It was just by definition going to allow those three type of fowl.
So chicken, domesticated ducks, and quail?
Yep.
Okay, so I would be for those three species of feathered friends.
I was only thinking chickens, but it's still a max of 20.
Right.
I don't know if ducks still own with chickens, or quails hate ducks, I don't know.
We don't have to worry about that. We just have to come up with a number, and what kind. So again, I would, I'm all for, I would be in favor of the three, hens, domesticated ducks, and quail.
I would agree, I'm in favor of those three. I was originally, again, looking at this from a chicken standpoint, but I'm agree that 20, however you mix and match them.
Okay. Roosters?
No.
No.
I was not in favor of that.
Danielle?
No.
Roosters?
No. No.
Okay. Registration with the Illinois Department of Agriculture Livestock Premises Program, which, okay, we had, what was the outcome of that? Everybody agreed with the annual inspections and the licensing? So is that, are you good with that?
Yes, yes.
I think it's important to point out, when you go to the website for the Illinois Department of Agriculture's premises licensing, one of the categories that they consider for this, as far as like a type of animal that should be part of this, is they use the term backyard poultry owner. So this is specifically, not specifically just for, but that is an inclusion in their program that they feel it's important to have. So we agree on the license, we agree on the inspections, the yearly inspection and the registration requirement, and the continued registration with that premises program.
Yes.
So did we all vote yes on the...
Yes. The next item is the timeframe to bring existing noncompliant properties into compliance. And just to, maybe Dana, it'd be good to say what things would make somebody noncompliant, whether it be location of coop, whether it's permitted, number of chickens, whether somebody has roosters. So what things would make somebody noncompliant that they would have a year or two fixed?
The largest area that we see is that, and we've had a number of these, is coops that are right on property lines. Coops that are placed too close to neighboring residential houses, so the noises are, it'd be an issue. That was brought up, we've, so setbacks following the zoning code. And to remind everybody, animal structures and accessory structures have been a permit, requirement, five-yard setback or out of easement since 1977, when the first zoning code was written. So it's, we're just not changing anything. So if someone does have those structures in the wrong place, they'll have a year to move them, because it's probably going to be one of the bigger expense items. But anything in this ordinance that gets passed, if it's during the initial inspection after the issuance, for the issuance of the license, is determined to be noncompliant. The staff and ZBA at the time recommended a one-year window for them to bring their properties into compliance.
So it's a timeline. It seems like the majority of people felt that 12 months was an acceptable timeline to bring yourself compliant after the initial issuance of the licenses. Is that still the case?
I think it's more than enough time. I'm in favor of 12 months.
Yeah.
Absolutely, 12 months.
Revocation if somebody is not compliant. There was talk about having a three-strike policy. I believe we talked about going to a policy that would just follow our current city code as far as being noncompliant with the zoning issue.
Well, we're, the question's going to, we need to discuss is, with this changes, if we're going to be putting a licensure limit, then a lot of the, the majority of the recommendations that came out will have to be moved into another location. And that, we need to move this to a part of the animal control ordinances where the licensure is required. Because under zoning, we don't have the ability to license. It's either you're permitted to have it by right, or you're permitted to have it by special use. And if you're going to have it by a special use, that's a $400 application, certified mail, a 60- to 90-day approval process to get approval, which is not what could, is what would be fair to the residents who have chickens. It would be cumbersome, it would be expensive, it would be all those things we talked about to not limit people from having chickens or being able to... chickens or being able to keep chickens. So, if the decision is to move from by right, it'll be approved by license, and then set the structures up in the police, in the animal control ordinance with those types of rules. And the same standards of the 12-month period, this coop site, and the things that were agreed to in this will be moved over to that primarily. Those things that direct to lot coverage, setbacks, locations on lots that are permitted that are true zoning land use will, will stay in the land use, because that's the agreement. So, that's how I see the next step moving forward.
So, I guess the question, Dan, is if we issue licenses to be a...
Backyard keeper.
Backyard keeper, right?
Fowl keeper.
So, right, and we have current codes in place to, like, enforce being, you know, compliant, right? So, I guess we're asking here is, like, at what point would you get your license revoked? Like, is it, again, is it three, you have three violations, it gets revoked? Or, you know, again, what would, we have to decide on what would be a license revoking situation?
Well, one of the biggest things I see is that if I, we came out there and people, and not that the existing folks, I'm talking, if we're looking, and revocation has to apply to all parties, current and future, is that if we get people out there that, you know, after they get their licenses, now they've decided to bring in roosters, and we get that, we give them the one warning, they don't get rid of it, we give them a second warning, then there's no reason that we have to go back a third time, okay? That may be one that came.
But Dan, you're, you're giving reasons, I think, I think she's talking about, maybe, maybe I'm wrong, the mechanics of how...
Yeah, just trying to come up with something black and white. Like, what would warrant someone to have their license revoked? Like, at what point would we say, you were issued a license, and at this point you are no longer eligible for a license because of, you know, the following?
Basically, it would be a direct noncompliance.
Okay. So, if you're, so any issue that was noncompliant after 12 months would be...
Basis for revoke.
Reason for revoking a license.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, so I would, I would propose that, so I got a...
I would agree with that.
If a noncompliant, if a property remains noncompliant for more than the 12-month period to become in compliance, that would be reason to revoke a license.
Correct.
I would, I would support that.
We...
Instead of like a three-strike policy.
Correct.
We, we also have to take a look, is that's, that's to accommodate, that whole recommendation of that, part of the ordinance was to accommodate those folks that have our existing chicken owners, to allow them the opportunity to, at no, they didn't intend to violate the code, they didn't, you know...
Right.
But an opportunity to bring it into compliance. If there's new folks, you know, and if they're not following the rules and they're habitual, there should be immediate recourse, or potentially immediate, you know, we, we have other provisions under the licensing on how things can get revoked.
Well, we could give them a warning, and if they...
Oh, yeah.
If the new folks would have applied for a license...
Correct.
And in order to obtain that license, they would have had to have been compliant.
Correct.
So, they checked the box, they got the license, so then I just feel like they fall into the same category, too. They, if there's an issue, they get 12 months.
No, I wouldn't give them 12 months, no, I wouldn't...
Two different items.
Well, no, but no, but they were, they qualify.
I, I think maybe, I think, well, they get 12 months to, to fix, these are two different things.
Right.
I think what, I think, kind of what you're asking is if, let's say, let's say we had no current chicken owners, and they were all going to be brand-new, can't have a rooster, somebody has a rooster, they get caught with it, what happens? What is the process that they would follow? Would they lose their chickens tomorrow? Would they go to a hearing? Would they, would they get a ticket? How would that work? The process is, is that, like any other code enforcement ordinance violation, is that we would issue them an advisory notice, give them a time for compliance, and typically it's between 14 and 21 days. Go back, and if they're not in compliance, they can get a citation, potentially get a citation, or get a second warning. And if the people ignore that, then the citations are up to $750 a day. Or if it's habitual ignoring, then the, the would be for a revocation. You know, we do have our normal processes, we do it on all levels of the property maintenance code, the zoning, other parts, so this would be an exception, the way it's written, exception to what our normal standard practices are.
So, I would say that if they don't comply after the second warning, then their license is revoked, that's it.
Okay, so do you have what you need to draft the ordinance?
Yes.
Okay, so then we'll see how it's structured, and then when the ordinance comes before us, we can, we can certainly review.
Right.
Okay, so you have what you need to draft language for revocation of any licenses?
These, your answers tonight clarified and gave direction. I didn't call it.
So, Dan, we have two different things. The current chicken owners would apply for a license, they'd have 12 months to comply, end of story. They'd have, that's it, they'd have 12 months. New chicken owners would have to be in compliance immediately.
Correct.
They want, they have to be in compliance.
Right.
These are the rules here, this is the way it's going to go.
Okay.
Correct.
So, is there anything else in the memo that you need direction on in order to draft the ordinance?
No.
Well, there is one thing that is kind of in here, but, but we talked about the, if somebody is surrounded, I gave that scenario, if you have, if you live at 100 Claritin, and, or let's say, make it easier for me, 102 Claritin, and somebody at 100 Claritin has chickens, 104 has chickens, on the backside, the, everybody else has chickens, now that we've gone with a 20-chicken limit, right? Now, now we're at 100 chickens surrounding a house. There should be protection for somebody to not be surrounded by chickens.
Well, I, I, we, I think we talked about, what we talked about was that if you, I mean, that having permission from the surrounding area, surrounding residents, that they're, they're in agreement with you having...
There is no, there is no provision for surrounding, but we...
Well, we, what, what can we do with that, Dan?
That would have to be...
We'd have to, my, my, mine is, is that you shouldn't have more than two people next to you that have chickens. You should not surround...
You should be able to watch, I'm sorry.
You should not have, you should not take somebody who doesn't want chickens around them to be surrounded by them. And what we should do is, we can grandfather people, and again, I'm protecting you guys. I don't, I don't know why you don't see that. I'm trying to help you by not getting rid of them. I, I don't think you got rid of it, but you, you have to have a heart for the people that have no skin in the game as far as chickens go, that they would be surrounded by chickens, not wanting to have that happen. So, I think it's only fair that we have a limitation going forward after the current chicken owners, even if that condition exists already, would be grandfathered in until it went away by attrition. But new licenses could not be issued that would put more than two people contiguous to a lot, to, to another lot. It's only fair. I, I don't understand, and we could talk about this after the meeting, why everybody's trying to protect these people that don't even live in prosopites yet, don't have a house in town, and don't even own a chicken, but we're worried about them. Let's worry about ourselves and make sure you guys can have what you want. But going forward, we should not create that condition going forward. It, and it can go away over time, grandfathered in, if that's the right term to use. But I, I, I would make a suggestion that...
So, it's like an...
No home should have more than two, two houses contiguous to it that has a license.
For new licenses.
I would agree with that.
That makes sense, okay.
I would, I would agree with that, with that, too.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. So, I think that's it. Is there anything else, Dan?
No, I'll work with the attorney and, and move forward with the, the suggestions here.
Thank you.
Okay. So, we don't have to close it, it wasn't a hearing or anything, it was just a discussion. So, we can go on to new business.
Okay.
New... Oh, yeah. So, Dan, your direction is to have an ordinance prepared based on the information from today's meeting, and the direction given for the next meeting, which is when, June 9th?
Yes, I'll have a draft prepared for the June 9th.
So, that'll be the first reading, and there will be no vote at that time, and it'll just be read aloud, as is with these changes in it, in the ordinance. And then the, the next meeting after that will be the second reading, which is when it's voted on. And, all right.
Is it better for us if we have questions about...
Stay here, I'll talk to you afterwards.
Well, I just meant for the whole council to, like, email everyone, ask them, ask that, where you guys took...
Well, you heard what, you heard what everything is. I mean, there's no secrets to what, what's out there right now, and what it's going to come back looking like. So, if you have any questions like that, call your alderman.
And at the next two meetings, there will be discussion at each of those.
Right, so I would...
So, it's not just tonight.
I would read the ordinance as proposed, and then come to the meeting and present your feedback on the ordinance as proposed.
If your questions don't get answered?
You can come to the meeting and present anything you'd like.
That's a risk, I mean, people are human, I mean, that's not a good comment to make, that's not a good question. Don't assume, don't assume people aren't going to answer the questions if they're asked, all right? Let's, let's, let's be civil, let's be civil. That's, that's not a normal question to ask, so let's, let's just be civil, your questions will be answered, okay?
Can I get posted a little bit sooner, because the stuff that, that Danielle wanted addressed today, like, I literally just got it off the website, it's 20 minutes before walking in the door.
Well, we just told you exactly what's going to be written.
Right, we just said it, we just said... I mean, your concern, the concern was 20 chickens, that's what ZVA had, I mean, I, there's not a lot, and if you guys think there is, we're in different worlds as far as what we think is happening here, but there's not a lot that's not going with what you want right now. 20 chickens, you have 20 chickens, most people don't.
Yeah.
Biggest thing is the roosters. I mean, that, that's it. I mean, is there a lot more discussion? We could have another meeting, I'm, I'm fine with that.
I think there's a lot of concern about the inspections and...
But we're going to have...
We inspect, we inspect rental homes, we inspect a lot of things in town. So, inspections and something that's an agriculture you should not...
It's for health and safety, we got, we have...
We'll be done with the rest of this in 15 minutes, if you want to wait, I'll sit here till, like I say, midnight and talk to you about it.
His poor wife, it's his anniversary.
So, let's go on to the next item, business, answer the question, correct?
Yes, sir.
New business, number 9A, R, Resolution R 2535, Staff Memo and Resolution Authorizing and Awarding Bid Recommendation for the River, or for the Willow Trails Flood Control Project with Burger Excavating Contractors for a total bid of $2,479,324.90, with a recommended 10% contingency for unforeseen underground conditions subject to the city attorney approval. Need a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second, Cameron.
Need a second? Have you got a second? Joe, would you like to tell us?
Sure, this is a great story. This, uh, this was an application that the city made for a federal community projects grant. They're very competitive, they're within each congressional district. Interestingly, we first started working with Representative Schneider's office on this. When the census changed and the areas were redistricted, Representative Schneider handed that off to Representative Shakovsky's office, which were supportive of it. It's a very competitive process. There's only a handful of these that are awarded in each district, and you're competing not only with every other community within a congressional district, but not-for-profits, educational institutions, it's just other, other taxing district, park districts. The city submitted an application, we were interviewed through the process, and, and we were awarded a $2.4 million grant for stormwater improvements on the east side. A big part of this, for those of you that are familiar, it goes back to our stormwater master plan from 10, 15 years ago, Christopher Burke Engineering. They identified this area where the, from that era, stormwater management was you flood parking lots within those condo apartment associations in, in that area of town. The result of that is, we've had people that live there that rent or own the condos, over time, and flooding incidents, they've lost two or three cars, just from the damage. It, it happens that quickly, where the parking lots flood, their cars are stuck there. So, this is a way to address that. What the, what the project is, it's a combination of a, of a large detention basin, a city-owned land that's on the east side of Willow Trails Park. People don't realize that half of that, or more than half of that is owned by the city, the other part is River Trails Park District. We're going to use that as a detention basin, there's going to be some excavation there. But then it's also a sewer piping to get that water over there. So, we're going to run storm sewers around the area of, of Palwaki Plaza, along the associations in that area, the whole neighborhood, it's a neighborhood improvement. And the city share of it is about $800,000, $900,000, that's the matching part of it. But essentially, we're getting $2.4 million of, of stormwater improvements that we never could have done on our own without the assistance of community projects funding. So, you know, I certainly thank all the staff members, Peter, our grant, grant support specialists. This is a, this is a major improvement for the east side of town, a community that, that has shown when, in severe stormwater management events, they've been very susceptible to damage. So, it's a good night, and, and the best thing is the bids came in below the engineer's estimate, we're in a good part of it, there's going to be more, as, as you see, there's engineering costs, there'll be other costs and so forth, but we're, we're, we feel very good about the, the target of this project, where it's going. And with this bid, recommended bid award, we anticipate starting this improvement this season.
So, it's about 3.2 million?
About 3.3, yes.
We have about a 25%, so we get 75 cents from outside the city for every 25 cents we put in.
Yeah.
When do we, do we have any anticipation when this might be completed?
Well, it, it will, it'll be started this year, I, I would say within 12 months. There's always contingencies, things that come about, but that, that certainly is our target.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item B is Resolution R 2536.
We have to, we have to, we have to vote.
So, we have a motion and a second, Joe told us about, all about it, so roll call, please.
Alderman Morgan Adams?
Aye.
Alderman Anderson?
Aye.
Alderman Dolick?
Aye.
Alderman Dash?
Aye.
Alderman Cameron?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item B, Resolution R 2536, Staff Memo and Resolution Authorizing and Approving Construction Engineering Services for the Willow Trails Flood Control Project with Gualt Hamilton Associates for a cost not to exceed $206,000, subject to the city attorney approval.
So moved, Anderson.
Second, Cameron.
We have a motion and a second, and Joe, this is just the construction engineering services for the project that you just talked about?
Correct.
So, unless there's any questions?
No questions.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Cameron?
Aye.
Alderman Dash?
Aye.
Alderman Dolick?
Aye.
Alderman Anderson?
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams?
Aye.
Motion passes. Staff and elected officials and commission reports, I'll start, the staff on the right.
No, sir. No, sir. No, sir, thank you.
Okay, we'll start with elected on the left. No report?
No. No report.
All right. Approval of warrants, will the clerk please read the expenditures and wire?
The total for the expenditures amounted to $511,595.70. We had wire payments on May 16th, we had a payroll amounting to $203,541.94. And then the April 2025 IMRF payment amounted to $16,530.96, bringing the total warrant to $731,668.60 for council's approval tonight, please.
Need a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Dolick?
Aye.
Alderman Anderson?
Aye.
Alderman Cameron?
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams?
Aye.
Alderman Dash?[1735.44]